To try to keep them able to go out and continue providing medical, medical equipment to patients that are being discharged. We have sheltered one individual, a homeless individual that was a person under investigation. We sheltered them before turning them over to the Food for the Soul, which has been an incredible partner in all of this. We can't thank those folks enough. In fact, they provided meals for the individual while we provided shelter. We were able also, because we, we are in a, in a, in a more safe position with our PPE and the fact that we did get strategic national stockpile equipment, we were able to also offer some of the additional equipment that we had to surrounding counties, if they had any facilities that were inside of 48 hours of having to shut down operations. And we were able to help out a nursing home in Aiken with masks. Again, just to prove the point that Kershaw County is there and we're not only capable of taking care of our own, but we're also willing to reach out to other counties that may not be as fortunate. That's it.
Other comments? Capacity of the hospitals seems to be okay. I've seen some reports from DHEC.
Correct, yes, sir.
That valiant people at, at Kershaw Health are doing a great job staying ahead of the curve that we're giving them.
Absolutely.
All right, good. Other comments? Vic, back to you. Well done, Gerald.
Thank you, Gerald. I'd like Director Cato to come up and just kind of tell you all how we're running the jail and operations and the process that we go through.
Excellent.
I think it's very helpful for y'all to understand just how we've been managing out there.
All right. How's everybody?
Hey.
Well, basically at the jail, can't stop running, so it's business as usual. The jail screens everyone proud of them coming into the facility, staff and detainees. Officers make contact with new arrivals by wearing a mask and gloves. Tempers are taken and we ask screening questions. If they fail the screening questions, we actually contact medical, medical advisors what we need to do moving forward. Due to the count being low, I think when I left today, it was about 72. We have been able to actually make three quarantine areas. So everybody who comes into the facility is actually quarantined for 14 days prior to them going into actual general population. We have reduced the contact with the public by utilizing the judges area and by utilizing the receptionist area that we have up front. Visitation has been counseled until further notice. We provide the detainees with free video visits that where they can still keep contact with their families on the outside. We also will be providing compassion credits for indigent inmates. Ones who don't have any money, we'll be providing free phone calls for them as well so that they can keep that family contact. We put in a, a plan in place for if we were to lose officers due to COVID-19. I've reached out to Lexington and Darlington. They stated that they would send me officers if need be to actually run the facility. So we have something in place. Hopefully we don't get there. We are allowing detainees to meet with their legal counsel via iPad that has been provided by the Pub Defenders Office. Basically, I put the iPad on the Pub Defender side, put the inmate on the other side. Actually tried it out last week with Jason Korencheck. Works great. Immate doesn't touch the iPad. I set it up. They visit 40 minutes, cut it off. We are working with IT to begin video bond hearings, waiting on the price and timeline. Other than that, no COVID-19 report at the detention center at this time. Hopefully we won't get it. Question?
Comments? Mr. Jones, please, sir.
Welcome. Glad to see you, Mr. Cato.
Yes, sir.
I have two questions just briefly. When you said that you're quarantining all new arrivals, 14 days, are they quarantined together or separately?
Actually, we got three station areas. We got three rooms in APod. If you come in on a Monday, you get put in that room. Coming on Tuesday, you get put in the other room. We rotate it out.
By themselves?
Yeah.
Good. Very good. What about the, you, you said something, having been there doing what you're doing, it just struck my mind, paying for the inmates' phone calls.
Basically, Secures is providing free video visits.
Okay. So it's no money out of our pocket?
No, sir.
Because I don't agree with that.
No, sir. No money out of our pocket. They're actually doing this.
Because jail is jail.
Yeah. They're actually doing this on behalf of, we had the council video, I mean, regular visits onsite, which is free. So now that we're not able to provide that, they're providing us free video.
Perfect. You've clarified that. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. And we also got some ankle monitors due to the fact that the county needs to use them. Secures has provided that to us as well. So we're good to go.
Ankle monitors for?
Just in case we get somebody that needs to be monitored but not need to stay in the jail.
I got you. Good, good.
We have about 13 of those onsite.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Sammy can't see you.
Yes, sir. That's okay. I'm talking to Mr. Cato. He's, he's fine. Just wanted to check in. I know that recently we got a letter from the solicitor in reference to our early release on some. Do you anticipate any more of that happening or have you been in contact with the solicitor?
Basically, they haven't contacted us. Basically. Oh, can you hear the mic, please?
Basically, Pub Defender Jason Korencheck actually facilitated the first batch of releases. And it wasn't due to COVID-19. It was actually due to the fact that General Sessions counseled until May. That's where those first releases came from. That wasn't told to us. So as they came through, about a week, we started, we did the releases. It wasn't until we saw the article in the paper that said it was COVID-19.
If I could, what cases are we talking about? What charges? When you say, I know it's minimum security, but what are you saying most of?
Some of them were drug charges. Some of them were waiting on rehab, bed space, and a few, one of them was family court. Rest of them were nonviolent crimes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other comments? Sammy, back there.
Yes, sir.
All right. Other comments? Back to you, Vic. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Cato.
I'd also like, Lauren, would you mind giving council an update on the activities Yelman engaging in? As you know, we've really ramped up our public communications effort. We've created, I think, an outfit that is not even equal to any. It's better than any in this state as far as the message we're sending and the communications and our efforts to reach our general public. And Lauren, if you could kind of brief council on some of the stuff you're doing and thinking.
Yes, sir. So with the help of Nathan Tisdale, who's been my teammate on this, we have been able to integrate video into our communications, which has been so integral because of COVID and how fast it's changing. We're able to utilize our social website to get out that information as quickly as possible. One of the things that we just released last week was the We Rise Up video. We had 18 elected officials that participated in this video. As of yesterday, it's gotten over 22,000 views on Facebook alone and counting. We just shot a video with the city of Camden in our Chamber of Commerce this morning where we're talking about the resources available to businesses due to COVID-19. So our entire emphasis on this whole process for communications is to be a one-stop shop for Kershaw County where all the information, whether it's from municipal governments, from agencies, anything like that, that we have a one-stop shop where folks and businesses can come and find information that's updated multiple, multiple times a day. So that's just some of the things that we've been doing just in the past week. I think on Thursday, we shot, between Wednesday and Thursday, we shot 24 videos in an eight-hour workday. So it's been wonderful and I think the community is very pleased by it and I hope y'all are as well.
We are, indeed. Comments?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Jones.
I think you're doing a great job, Lauren.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Malorn. Mr. Carpenter?
This is Chairman, Members, Council. The county is running. The county is running smoothly. We're still processing deeds. We're still picking up garbage. We're still issuing permits. We're still doing everything we've been doing. Nothing is shut down, but we're managing it and running it in a way that is appropriate to the president and the governor's orders and that keeps the safety and security of our citizens and our employees in mind. But Kershaw County is still open for business and, and I hope that these messages and reports make you as proud of our employees as they make me. That's my report, sir.
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. It just struck my mind, actually, or I would have asked you earlier. Are we essential or nonessential?
Elected officials?
Yeah, no, the governance, the government center.
We're considered essential.
Okay. Because I came up here today and those doors were locked and I couldn't get in. I also didn't have my pass key to get in, but eventually, security did come and let me in. How are you dealing with that with the locked doors?
Well, security is there at the front to see the business being conducted by phone or online. Almost all that we do can be done that way. So we're referring people to, to either make the call to someone who's here in an office and they can deal with it that way. And so, so we're managing.
When, when do you think you see maybe unlocking the doors and putting some kind of, I, I noticed when I go to a food line or something, they got the plexiglass sheets up there to protect employees at the cash register. When do you think we'll go to that?
At this point.
They're doing it now.
As long as the governor is still giving us the guidance he has, I'm looking to the governor. I'm not going to, at this point, consider going out ahead of the governor on something like that. So.
So food line's gone out ahead of the governor?
No, he's told them to say no.
Okay. But we're essential too, aren't we?
We're essential too, but we're able to get the business done.
And listen, I've got no complaints. I just want some, I know we're being live streamed here. I just want to make sure we get it out and we're, we're clarifying what's going on and why.
Any business that cannot be conducted through a phone call, email, or online, then they make an appointment and we'll meet with them on a personal basis.
Okay.
The register deeds is something that can't be done that way. So they make appointments. We deal with them on purpose, on person.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good. Other comments? Excellent update. I congratulate the staff for terrific work. Really, well done. Well done. Okay, the next item is a public presentation, item number two, by the ad hoc committee. If you recall back in March, we agreed that I would designate an ad hoc committee as a chairman. Mr. Tucker has agreed to take it over and, and we're now going to hear his, his report. Just one quick note here. The report is now, but Mr. Tucker has asked that at item number two, under new business, when we, if you get down there, you see ad hoc committee update. That's where we would discuss action going forward. Not to say that we couldn't do it during this briefing, but for economy of effort, this is to understand the report. And you're certainly willing to do whatever you'd like, but just economy of effort would be hear the report now and ask questions. And then at item number two, under new business, we'll roll up our sleeves and see which way we're going to go. Over to you, Mr. Tucker, and introduce any members in the group that you have.
Yes, sir. I think you had a councilman.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. You pretty much answered my question because I was concerned. I was wondering why we had the ad hoc committee report and then we also here had the ad hoc committee update. And I was told, I got this document literally in my hands this morning and of course I could see it on my phone hardly, but I got it last night on that. And I was told there would be votes and I was told today there won't be votes, so there will not be any votes. Okay.
Yeah. And thank you for bringing that up. I mentioned it. That's the third part.
Yes.
Based on the briefing we get, because we got it last night and this morning in some cases. And then we'll go into new business. If you look on the agenda, we'll decide on an action plan. And then after that, based on what y'all decide, we'll go into a call meeting as soon as possible thereafter. And there we would ask a vote. I hope that's agreeable, but I needed to give everybody a time to receive this report and understand it and digest it. Okay?
So basically, Mr. Chairman, what you're asking is that we save our questions for new business?
Oh, you can have questions now if you don't have matters of understanding.
Got you. Thank you.
But I'm not going to curtail any discussion, but just economy of effort, we listen, then we deal with it at the new agenda, at the new business, and then we'll come back in here in a couple of days, maybe, to vote. Sammy, go ahead, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman and council members, Madam Clerk, our dearly beloved administrator and county legal counsel, and to the audience that I have behind me. I first and foremost want to say thank you, Councilman Jones, for bringing this up in the earlier days and allowing to, it to be put out there where others could think and eventually we act on it. So I appreciate your thinking forward and your idea. Chairman Burns, we thank you for assembling this ad hoc committee. And I want to tell all of you who have served, thank you. I'm going to recognize you here in a minute. This has been a hard-working group. We've met four times in less than three weeks and they kind of think it's, it's like a church meeting. It doesn't ever end. But we do do our business and then we get out. But we had a good group, good core group. And let me start off by saying that we met on the 27th of March, 31st of March, April 6th, and as latest, yesterday, April the 13th. And we do have a report there to, to go over. I'm going to ask that you ask questions as we go down because there's actually six tasks that were given in a minute random. And then we had the seventh one, which is the presentation. So there's going to be seven different things on there. We'll go right down it. You'll hear from different speakers because we kind of worked this in a kind of subcommittee. And if you got a question, ask the question for clearly, but just don't get down into the weeds until we have discussion on new business, if, if you would just do that for me. But make sure if you got a question, we, we get some clarity before we leave them up here. So with that said, to my left right here, we have Ms. Amy Kiner. She was our secretary. Right behind her is Mayor Emmons. I do the ladies first. She was our assistant secretary. And then over here to my left, Councilman Snodgrass was one of the committee members. And to my right was Councilman Cornell, who also sat on there. And then we had Jeffrey Graham, Councilman Jeffrey Graham, and then Mr. Ken McCaskill, who is from the Bethune area, who's a small businessman up there. And then we had for our information and know-all, Mr. Vic Carpenter. Now, he did not vote on anything or, or with us on anything or against us, but he was there to support us with all the administration help we need and he done a fantastic job. So I want to say to y'all once again, thank you, thank you, thank you. So with that being said, let's get into the report. If you happen to have your minute random, we're going to go right to where it says task two, and it would be determining the state conditions of small businesses and nonprofits located in Kershaw County. You should have that in your, how many were pages this is? Handout. Let me pull it up. Many pages, should be a staple thing here. Small businesses of 20 or more employees, five types of businesses. And let me stop and let me reference back. This portion was done by Ms. Amy and the mayor and they did a fantastic job on it. We appreciate it. The good part about that is Ms. Amy Kiner had already started a lot of this through the chamber and we were very appreciative of the head start that she gave us because we would have been still probably meeting a lot longer than we had to if a lot of this foundation was not done. Yes, Mr. Jones?
You, do you want me to comment on clarification as we go through this or do you want me to wait?
Sure.
Because I have some questions and some clarification and comments.
I don't, I don't want comments. I want questions if you need, if you got clarify, if you need clarification. That's what I'm saying.
So will, so I guess what I'm saying is best that I wait till we get to new business?
Yes, sir. Write them down and we'll.
I got them written down.
Okay. All right. Well, hold on to them for me, please.
I will, but I would slow you up tremendously if I started.
Please don't do that.
Because I don't agree with that first one already, 20 or less.
Got you. But we'll, we'll dive into that in a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So of course you see the list of, of the retail businesses, the restaurants, personal care. I'm not going to read this verbatim. The mayor and Ms. Amy also, we don't have a business license here in Kershaw County. So they took the business license from the town of Elgin and the city of Camden and they combined to try to figure out how many businesses were still in business, how many had closed and what those percentages are. And you see there, there was about 46 closed in Camden and about 5% of Elgin businesses' license, of Elgin's license, business license, and 18% of retail business license. Now, at least 34 businesses in Camden had adjusted their hours, meaning they, you know, had scaled back and probably just doing what they can to survive. We were working through this timeline as the governor was studying, giving us orders on how to roll back and keep our distance. So, you know, some of this was a moving target, so that's why we had to keep changing. So we go down to item number two unless we need some clarification on item number one, determine the impact and efforts on all small businesses.
Item number one, I, I got chastised this morning and last night by farmers. They qualify as small business too, under the EIDL. So there's about 150 farmers out there that are being impacted. So just, just to make sure we keep track of our agricultural community.
And just to your point, they're, they're not on the ineligible list, so they can apply. And we'll get to that part in a minute.
Okay, thanks.
Determine the impact of the efforts of small, of, of small businesses and agencies and nonprofits of the recent past federal stimulus program as well as recent approval of state South Carolina emergency response, particularly as they address those areas of concern identified in 1A. That's the PPP as you see on there. I'm learning, talking to the chairman and Ms. Amy and other folks that's in banking, business folks, and just depends on who you talk to and where they are. I, I get feedback that some of them are very optimistic that they'll be receiving funds this week. Some of them think the system's broke already and some of them are frustrated and some of them is just pure de lost. They don't know. They've done the paperwork and they just, they're kind of sitting out there. And I happen to be one of those. I've done my paperwork. It's been over a week, but I haven't heard anything and I haven't seen anything. I checked the bank this morning. There was no extra money in there. Unless one of y'all won't go make a deposit when you leave here, I'd be happy to give you my account number and routing number. So with that being said, the injury disaster, the EIDL, I'm not sure how many has applied for that here locally. I know during some conversations that there has been quite a few throughout the country and throughout the state. I don't think we track exactly which business applied for what yet, but that is a question on the application. Have you received compensation or any other resources? So move on over to page two. Note, businesses can apply for both. This is important. Businesses can apply for both programs above, but must use the funding for different expenses. Local funds do not negatively impact getting these funds. So whatever we do here locally, and I thank Ms. Amy and Mayor for putting that in, whatever we do locally does not affect what they can get from the state or the federal government. So, you know, I've heard the word double-dipping and this, that, and the other. Just know that as business, especially small businesses folks, as they try to survive or reopen or whatever the case is, that they're going to have hurdles that your bigger corporations won't have because they don't have the financial resources to pull from. You know, some businesses already maxed out in their, in their equity of their assets and property and things of that nature. So they just, they just don't have it. So they're going to need a little help along the way from several sources that they qualify from. And I don't think they ought to be punished because they're, we're trying to help them. Business tax provisions, advise how council and municipalities and agencies may leverage these assets quickly. We'll get into what the, what the different municipalities and counties is doing in, in a little bit. That'll be in task number four. The SBA loans, you've got, I know, three banks here that's doing those. Walkovia, well, it used to be Walk All Over You. It's Wells Fargo now. Bank of America and First Citizens, I know are doing them. And there may be more, but I know those three are because I have contact. And there's more. Okay, thank you, Ms. Amy. So what the banks have told Ms. Amy and what I've talked to through my contact is if they come by through the drive-through or make an appointment, they'll get them the information and they're trying to help these different businesses walk through this. But see, here's the problem. We don't know how long this is going to be for turnaround. The people that's giving out the money don't know how long it's going to be for turnaround because this stuff changes, in my opinion, daily, weekly. And so it makes it so inconsistent, it's hard to have a gauge on it. Federal government is asking for patience as they clarify their processes and rules. The message from a recent call, Representative Ralph Norman included to go ahead and apply. And I think, Mr. Jones, you was on this call. Am I correct? Did you make that call?
No, I did. I just invited 100 people.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Or maybe more.
Let things be worked out on the back end and if office is ready to assist anyone who's having trouble receiving the funds. So what we are hearing is that if you're having some issues up there in Washington and you just can't get anywhere with anybody, call your representative, your US congressmen and senators. Okay? And I think they're going to do another one here real soon, probably if not this week, next week. So.
Let me speak to that. Congress is out of session until the 15th of May. So that's, they're here campaigning. They're not, they're not passing legislation or adding additional funds.
Well, it's a good time to catch them. They want you to vote.
Yeah. Have you drawn the distinction between PPP and EIDL? What I'm hearing, and maybe you and Amy can talk to that, that the PPP seems to be moving faster than EIDL.
I tend to believe that, but I'll let Ms. Amy, okay, she's nodding her head. Yes, I, I can't tell you what percentage is, but I can tell you the, the PPP is what the banks have really pushed out over the last week and a half, two weeks, to try to help, which is the Paycheck Protection Plan for the ones that don't know. And I think the EIDL is a little bit more cumbersome. To fill out that package is not quite as easy as the PPP. Will you agree with that or have you seen that? I'm going to get you up here one way or the other.
So not so much the application. The application for the EIDL is easier. It's just that the SBA doesn't have as efficient a process perhaps to process those loans like our banks do. Our banks are very used to processing loans and managing that kind of information. So the federal government does tend to be slower when it comes to processing loans versus our local lenders who are used to doing that process.
So it's fair to say that PPP, which is administered by banks and CPAs, has a name and a face associated with it, whereas EIDL, it disappears into an electronic process. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. They have someone local they can talk to with the PPP loan. And with the idle loan, they have to call a number or send an email and they may or may not get through.
Yeah. And the number I shared with Sammy and Amy is around $25 million has been processed onto the PPP. But nobody has any feedback on the EIDL. Okay? All right. Yep, okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other clarification or questions on that? Okay. Let's move down to determine the gaps in the, the coverage that exists between the identified, issues identified in federal stimulus.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad this number three.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely makes no sense to me whatsoever.
In what way?
And that it's a lot of red tape and bureaucracy. Of course, I, I'll be glad to go over it now or wait either way.
You, you're saying that our response make no sense of the question?
No, I'm just saying, y- you've got in here no coverage of local fees, taxes or licenses. I mean, why is that even in there? We have no control over that.
But that's what, it asks for the gaps. In other words, when you apply for those programs, it does not cover that. That's the gaps. So the federal government or, um, or the state doesn't have control what we do here locally, but that's the gaps that it does not cover that we're doing, that we're trying to close the gaps. I think you're probably misunderstanding the question, what it was asking.
No, 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 no. I, I understand the question exactly. I just got confused with what you just said. Um, you know, when, when we don't have any control over that, it's not an issue. And not only that, the, we're talking about fees with the fire, solid waste. You know, uh, this is a sixty day ordinance. So, I mean, it wouldn't, we would have no involvement or control over that anyway with this being such a short term.
What we're explaining is if you were to get, um, the PPP or the, uh, $10,000 grant, because there's another one out there, um, or the EIDL, um, these are some of the shortfalls or could be, um, where, um, the county even or the cities can pick up or it may not be addressed, Jimmy. That's the way that, um, we're reporting out. Or do I have the misunderstanding?
Mr. Jones, where this came from was, uh, city license fees went out uh, and were due or are due very soon. And so as we talked to various businesses and organizations, there was some concern about being able to pay those. I understand that you don't have control over that, but we were still identifying gaps between, um, what the federal government would cover and what needed to be taken care of with businesses.
Okay, uh, I go back to, once again, it talks about the possibility of needs six to 12 months from now. Once again, this ordinance is only good for sixty days at the most. And I think you guys have got it here, I think maybe thirty days?
We have no timeline.
No timeline yet, okay.
Well, and, and let me interrupt if I can.
Sure.
Our perspective was not necessarily the ultimate ordinance that comes out of it. Again, it's the information from businesses and organizations that they're telling us what their concerns are. And so their concerns with the federal government support is that that should happen quickly. I use that lightly, but that should happen quickly. And so what happens when that money is exhausted within the next six months? And maybe their business is still slow? Or now the deferred payments for various things are coming due, et cetera? So we did not, from our perspective, when answering this question, we did not look at what your ordinance might be. We took information from businesses about their concerns and where the gaps lie.
These are city businesses that pay? Are this, you said license fees?
Well, that particular example, yes.
That's what I was talking about, with that...
But we took information from all, um, businesses across the county.
Sure, oh, absolutely. And I, and I know you did, Amy, believe me, I, I do. I just, I guess I was just a little bit confused because we don't have a licensing fee. And how much money is the city putting into this?
That's in Part Four that's coming up, but, um, according to the report, there's none. And we'll, we'll, we'll get to that, um, real quickly here in just a minute. And Task Number Four.
Thank you.
You, you're welcome. And so I, I just wanna say, don't get this confused as being the ordinance. This is, this is gonna, uh, derive us to where we need to be in the ordinance. So it's a guide for us, okay? So don't, you know, if you don't particularly like something that may be in the report, it's okay, but it's to guide us as council so we can formulate that ordinance to read how it needs to read or how we see fit for it to read.
And let, let me make myself clear. Because I'm asking questions.
I have no problem with that.
I'm not angry, I'm not upset. I'm asking questions and I'm gonna say this. I think you have done a fantastic job leading that committee. You have communicated with me, you have stayed in touch with me. You were concerned about my interest in this and I think that needs to be made public. I, you're the only, you're the only one that called me. Thank you so much.
Well, well, you, you're welcome. Um, we, we try to, uh, stay in touch with, um, with, with all of you and let you know what we're doing and how we're doing. And, and it's not me, it's, it's the team that's put together. And all, all seven of us work very well together and very hard, so. Um, with that being said, um, let's move over to Page Three so we can keep moving through this. Concerns about the impact of perception. This is a big one. Uh, Kershaw County and Camden have been described as the epic center and starting location for the virus in South Carolina. So therefore advertising is needed to help turn perception around. Um, that's something that Ms. Amy, when she was going through, doing her, um, little survey, uh, she and the mayor and, um, the other little committee she had for the chamber, um, this is something that kept coming up and it's a big concern for businesses. So we, we need to make sure that we, uh, in our process, figure out a way how we can put a positive spin on that. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones?
I have an issue with that. Uh, I don't think we should be putting money into advertising when it is what it is. I mean, the numbers are out there and, uh, you know, I mean, I, I, I guess some of, some of you folks may think we need to advertise it. I just don't, um...
And, and this not saying you have to, that's, that's...
I think we need to be putting, let me say this. I think we need to be putting the money into the small businesses or the, the, the local businesses rather than the advertisement for our reputation.
But that's not what they're saying. That's, we're not telling you to put money, this money into advertising. We're, we're putting into the business. We're saying that is a concern and we probably need to look at it on a county level.
So you're not gonna ask, you're not gonna ask to spend your money on advertising on this money?
No, that's not, that's not in any of your paperwork.
I appreciate you clarifying that.
If I can, just to be, um, Ms. Chairman, uh, in with our own rules, can I ask that we, uh, extend the presentation because we're up to twenty-two minutes?
Absolutely.
And, and with no time expiration, please?
I think by consensus, yeah, absolutely. This is important. Let's get it right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Uh, researching possible, uh, possible areas, identifying three above that can be addressed through local efforts, uh, late payment of sewer bill, bills. Um, of course, you know, um, we, when they say late fees, they're talking about, um, I mean, uh, fees period. They're talking about the three percent, I think we get Vic, three or four percent on the credit card, debit card, they're waiving that as well. Um, waiving P, fees and penalties for vehicle taxes, providing outreach, supporting resources, uh, to our industries, throughout dedicated staff. And of course, um, our Economic Development Office down there where Ms. Lauren Rita is and Dennis Kidd. Um, so, uh, with essential industry, uh, things that they may need. So the county is doing what it can and the county, and I'm, I will probably say that at this point in time, is the only one that's putting money up, that's making this recommendation to you.
Have a question.
Yes, sir, I have an answer.
Okay. We'll see. Number Four, B and, uh, and C. Who came up with that? Whose idea was that to put that in here?
It was asked. Read your, um, task thing.
No, no, I mean...
Your random.
I, I'm saying I agree with it, I like it. I think we need to do more of that. That was a very good, uh, insert.
Yes, sir, it was, it was asked. Uh, when the chairman gave us his random, it was broken down just in these categories as you see. So, um...
Well, I like that.
What I'm gonna say about the city is they're, they're doing things, uh, such as, I guess, um, gonna do some deferred payments. Um, they're going to, um, waive some fees, credit card, um, charges and debit card payments like we're doing. Uh, they're not gonna disconnect anybody's services for, for water or light. Um, the city is, um, willing to make staff available to assist any business owners for, uh, across the county as they apply. They don't have to be in the city, but as they apply for, um, the bin, uh, the small, for, for, um, any applications. Um, city continues to provide support for business through its, uh, uh, grant programs. And, um, they're gonna be doing a lot of, uh, from my understanding, one-on-one cases as people come in and have, uh, different needs, they're gonna try to work with them. Here's the problem, um, that I see. Uh, the city will be deferring some of these utility bills. And what's gonna end up happening is you defer, 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 doesn't go away because that, that's not free. Um, and then come August, there's a $2,000 bill that someone can't pay in August because the business will not have recovered by then. So, um, now next what they're gonna need is a payment plan. And it can't be aggressive one because then you'll end up putting them further back than what they are at that point. So they're gonna address some of those issues from my understanding and, um, they're gonna do them one-on-one. But I will say for the public record, I did talk to, uh, the mayor and I did talk to the city manager, Mel Pearson. And at this time, um, they were not, uh, able or willing, whatever the case may be, to put any funds into the call for. So I hope I answered your question there. Um... Okay, Town of Elgin and Mayor, you can come up here anytime you want to to speak for your own town. The Town of Elgin is tracking with businesses who have closed due to the current situation. Mayor Emmons will be proposing to council, and that's not a proposal anymore. Um, I think she's spoken to council already and they're gonna be waiving some, um, license fees and renewal fees for this year. And they'll be extending deadlines from April fifteenth to Ap-, uh, July fifteenth for the Town of Elgin. And, um, also there at the, uh, town hall, they'll be setting up receiving calls for small businesses to assist them in any matters as well as such as, you know, the PPP, uh, the, uh, the, uh, $10,000 grant, whatever assistance, SBA loan, whatever they may need. So they're gonna be, uh, standing by waiting for phone calls to assist them as well. Uh, Mayor, uh, Emmons, you wanna add?
Thank you, guys, for giving us an opportunity to speak. Just first wanna say thank you on behalf of the small businesses in Kershaw County. Um, they're our foundation. I mean, my town, especially the majority of the businesses located in our town limits, they're small businesses, mom and pops, and they are what keep us running day-to-day. So just on behalf of, um, the Elgin Town Council, I have reached out to my council. I have submitted two proposals to them. Um, we're gonna be working on something and hopefully voting on it within our, at our next meeting. But like I said, once again, thank you. And this makes me very proud to be a resident of Kershaw County.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege to speak to Mayor McCoy from Bethune. And so, uh, of course you see what's, um, in here for them. The Town of Bethune is encouraging, uh, save this thing, checking on the elderly and helping those in need with their water, uh, costs. They're doing a deferred payment as well. Uh, they're not gonna cut off any water. And the other, you got Alligator and, um, there's like three or four companies up there. They're all doing the same. So there's not gonna be any disconnect for any of the customers up there on the water or the sewer, which Bethune doesn't have sewer, but, um, they have been in communication with the sewer, uh, company as well. Um, they, um, they're assisting, uh, the citizens who may be needing some assistance, whether it's meals or whether it may be, um, you know, other things, um, that they're out of. It may be, you know, baby stuff, stuff such as milk and formula and pampers and things of that nature. Um, all their non-essential businesses have shut down, um, which are mostly, um, your small business and your hairdressers up there. So it's kinda like a little ghost town up there right now. But they're managing and they're trying to, um, survive until we can all get through this. Uh, I'm gonna let Ms. Amy come up and talk for the chamber, if that's okay? And, um, then we'll talk a little bit about our nonprofits.
Thank you. Uh, so if you haven't checked it out already, kershawcountychamber.org has been, uh, updated daily with information for businesses and that has kind of been the focus of our work at the chamber. Uh, I have sat through many, many calls to be updated on everything from these federal loan programs to unemployment, to some of the tax, uh, incentives as well. So all of that information we are posting through our website. We, of course, are answering calls for, uh, any businesses, whether they're members or not, regarding questions that they have about those programs, any direction that we can provide or any contacts we can connect them to, to make sure they get the help and the resources that they need. Uh, we have also acted, as we did in the first section of this report, as a source for information for other organizations to understand what businesses are going through, particularly small businesses, and, um, ask them for their ideas and information for solutions. Uh, my next step, which is not in this report, but to share with you, is to look into how we continue to support businesses as we continue the length of our, um, restrictions, so to speak, and also looking into how to celebrate the reopening of our economy afterwards. So those, uh, activities are in process as well. Thank you.
Uh, comments from Amy? Uh, I'll just say on behalf of all of us, thank you. What a, what a performance. Absolutely, home run. Thank you. Sammy?
Thank you, Ms., um, Ms. Amy. Um, okay, so, um, on the social agencies, let me tell you who we talked to. Um, there is actually, uh, some letters that you don't have in this packet that, um, we can make available for you. Um, we talked to, uh, the, uh, Community Medical Clinic, um, Fine, Fine Arts Center or the Arts, uh, Historic Camden, uh, United Way. I actually talked to United Way. Those three Jeffrey talked to. I talked to United Way and Council on Aging. And, um, what they're, what they're finding and running into is that, um, they're having a higher demand, uh, for services. Um, less supplies and less help. And any of you have a little bit about business that doesn't go well? You can't have high demand, little supply and little help because then you, you, you don't deliver. So that's what, that's what they're doing. Um, they're not turning anyone away, anyone away. They're, they're, they're just stretched like a rubber band and they're needing some assistance. So what the AdHoc Committee decided to do, um, and, uh, we did this in our report, um, is to separate those, uh, nonprofits and take their portion of the money, and this broke down in here, we'll get to that, and give it, uh, let it remain with, do it that way. It's totally left up to you, but that, we thought that was best, um, it was clean, to keep it cleaner, and it was, it was, it was probably the best way for the nonprofits to, uh, receive their portion without having to go through, um, the other process. So, does that answer some of your questions?
Some of it. Nonprofits, uh, we had talked earlier about mainly it was gonna be those that provide food and shelter.
Yeah, well, it's not just limited to them, but those are the main ones. Food and shelter and, um, you know, you, because you got so many of those groups now that's bonding together as well to try to pull through this. So, um, what I'm gonna recommend and this committee recommends is that, you know, just like our contributing agency list, if you just trust into the administrator and let him do what he do best, um, I think this will be clean and easy. Because I can tell you what we don't wanna do with trying to help small businesses or nonprofits. This decision don't need to be left up to county council as far as the distribution of anything. Because I, number one, it just gets too political. And even if it doesn't get political, it's gonna be perceived that way. Okay? All right, we're down to the research of financial imp- implication, uh, implications. And I'm gonna turn that part, this is, uh, Task Number Five, over to, uh, Councilman Snodgrass. And of course he'll lean on his partner, Mr. Vic Carpenter, and I'll let them go through this with you, if you may.
Sure. So administrator and myself, we were tasked with, uh, identifying, uh, the financial sources of, of, of where we could pull funds from in order to make this happen uh, and as well as the impacts on that, as well as if it would impact the county, how it would impact the county as far as our day-to-day operations in our future. So, uh, Vic, if you will speak to that, I appreciate it.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, members of council. Um, the county, uh, two years ago approximately, uh, set up a new policy for use of reserves whereby it created, um, two, two sources of reserve fund or, or two destinations for reserve funds. Uh, the first is an operating cash reserve of three months cash in order to buy this through downtimes, um, uh, lack of revenue, uh, cash flow. The second source was an emergency reserve or disaster reserve that was set up for the purpose of providing, um, resources to the county for, for acts of, of emergencies, of, of natural disasters, things like that. So that money was funded at two and a half million dollars. Uh, so, you know, the first, um, answer to the question is that by using the emergency reserves to fund any programs such as this, there really wouldn't be an impact on our ability to operate. Um, year-to-date, our, all of our tax revenues are pretty much in. Uh, they came in ahead of a budget. Most of our other expans-, revenues are in. The state has, uh, given me, um, assurances that their position is strong, that there will be no cuts to the state funding for us. So we'll receive all state funds as budgeted. So our budget is in good shape for this year. Uh, using, uh, the dollar amount that has been discussed as a million, using a million dollars out of the emergency reserve uh, would still leave us a million and a half dollars in that reserve plus, uh, the almost seven million dollars in our operating reserves as well. Uh, so, uh, to answer the question, the impact and the, the financial implications of our efforts, um, the local funds are there and using them would not affect our ability to operate this county.
Mr. Carpenter?
Uh, and when, and then would you explain, because the question came up and I think it was, it's, it's an important question. How would this impact our ability to respond to a hurricane, uh, tornado, that, that type of thing if we would proceed with this program?
If a hurricane or a tornado came through, those, the, the predominant cost to the county in those cases are gonna be the public work side. Um, moving debris, gathering debris, disposing of, of debris. Um, so we've already got, first of all, our own capacity in-house of doing most of that. We've already got contracts in place with companies to come in and assist us in managing it. Uh, the million and a half dollars, um, would be, um, adequate to, to keep us running in those aspects of, of debris management and debris removal. So I don't see that we're unable to continue to meet those, uh, those obligations as well.
Isn't it correct that some of that would be FEMA, uh, reimbursed?
Almost all that would be FEMA reimbursed, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just to be clear, I think Mr. Jones had a question. This is for the year ending one July.
Correct.
Okay, so this assessment takes us to the end of this fiscal year, ending the thirtieth of June. Uh, Jimmy, go ahead.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Um, just a couple of quick questions. I noticed that in here we talk about using the county's emergency funds. I, I, I remember, I remember distinctly when this was done.
The random?
And, yeah, but it was done because of me. Um, we were doing all this prior to that for the last thirteen or twelve years. I mean, we've, we've maintained a cash manager, management reserve. We had, that was our auditor's recommendation. Those are the things we did. And then we have what we call a disaster reserve. It says in this, I'm gonna read from this ordinance, it says that a disaster reserve is created and maintained at a level of one-month expenditures or of the prior year's budget. The disaster reserve shall be used in the event of natural disaster or extraordinary events. So we're not changing anything. We're, we're authorized to do this based on our own resolution right here.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanna make sure that was understood. What I would like to say, and it's just a small little personal thing here, under number five, when we talk about the financial applications, we go down to the first bullet point by using the county's emergency funds. Let's, let's call it what it is, is disaster, um, funds, because that's what this is. And then on the last bullet point here, where the county has authored... And then on the last bullet point here, where the county has author, author, the county will authorize to give funds, how about provide funds? We're not giving anything. This is the taxpayer's money. We're just gonna provide it. That's just something I was thinking about.
Well, this type of language will be in the, um, once again, in the ordinance. So, um, we can, yeah, so we can, and I appreciate you pointing that out, and that's not a problem. I, I like the word provide and give as well, but, um, that's where, uh, Mr. DeBeau's, Mr. Morgan get paid the big bucks, they gonna, they gonna hook this up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So with that being said...
Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Just, uh, one question for the administrator, then, uh, just a comment. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, how do you feel about our ability then to, after, let's, if, if we go through with this program, uh, how do you feel about our ability to then re-replenish this, uh, this emergency fund back up to these, I mean, it's something we budget for in, in the future and?
We set ground rules that say that any use of the funds, um, we've got three years to replenish it, um, to bring it back to where it needs to be. So we, we created the, the onus on the county to, to replenish that fund, um, over a three-year span.
Yeah. Then, Mr. Tucker, I will add, I don't know if you're gonna talk about this, I will add that we, in the prior report is, you know, if, if we move forward with this, that we would create a, there would be a, kind of a third-party entity that the funds would go to, and then that entity would then help us, uh, distribute, provide, as Mr. Jones would say, uh, to, to those.
Abs- abso- absolutely, and I think that was in your, uh...
Yes, it's point three in the...
Right, yeah, in your thing there, it talked about it, um, in bullet number three on any five, that the county has, uh, has authorized to provide funds to support healthy and safe, and the county will, uh, prefer to distribute the funds to a third party.
Correct.
And, and since you're on that, then I will go to Mr. Cornell here for task number six. Um, we have identified a third party, and, uh, we will be talking about that, but there's some guidelines to go with that. So when we get, uh, finished with Mr. Cornell, who I recognize now to, uh, explain the grant...
Let me ask a question. Any other questions on the revenues for twenty, FY twenty, ending in about two months? I only have one going forward into 2021. Mr. Carpenter, would you go through what Mr. Rainwater said? Drink water for you, Sammy. Mr. Rainwater had to say, on the Council of Economic Advisers, in terms of collections into next year...
Sure.
Which, uh, which I interpret is about a million dollar down. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, essentially, the, um, you know, the way the, the economy of South Carolina will be most affected will be through sales tax collections. Obviously, we are a tourism-based economy, so, uh, those governmental entities that live off of tax receipts collected by sales will be affected significantly. Uh, Kershaw County is, is not as driven by, by sales taxes as the coast is, or even the state is, uh, but we'll still take a hit. And, um, and based on, um, on their assumptions of what's gonna happen and, and what we've already seen happening, uh, the state's predicting about a 20% decrease in sales collections for the fourth quarter of this year, so that's where we are right now, and kind of carrying that through. Uh, so that's one reason, um, that, you know, looking at that, my, um, you know, the way I'm looking at and anticipating how that would affect us is for next year, that we would see a decrease of about, um, I believe, a, um, decrease of about, again, a 20% decrease in local option sales taxes. Also, we'll see a decrease in, um, car taxes as well, uh, as we, uh, people are not buying as many newer cars for a while. Um, local option sales tax is, you know, as you know, it's reflected in the credit that shows up on our tax bills. Um, other aspects of, uh, of our budget, however, the state is not anticipated to cut any of their, um, obligations to us. In fact, at this point, they're telling me they would still meet their commitment to increase the local government fund at this point. But all that figures into, into what I'm determining our next year's budget would be probably about a million dollars down, but that can be offset and will be offset through our spending, um, because our expenses go down. Part of the anticipated expenses, uh, significant were the increases in retirement. Um, the state is gonna be waiving those increases, so we won't have to incur those costs. Uh, fuel increases will be down significantly. Um, there'd be significant savings for us in fuel. Uh, we've already implemented hiring freezes, we've already implemented, uh, spending on capital freezes, we've already implemented, um, freezes on travel and, uh, training, except where, where necessary and required. So, um, my comfort level is that based on our normal level of spending versus revenues, uh, we, since I've been here, we have, have every year but one always spent at least 3% less than the budgeted amount, and I see no reason we won't be spending it more than, spending less than that. So, uh, my commitment to the council is that I'm very comfortable that even with a decrease of revenues of a million dollars, that we will be able to decrease the budgeted spending by that much as well.
So we lose a million dollars, and we do less. So that's what he's telling us, uh, and that's prudent. Yeah, I get you, Jimmy. Uh, but I, I set that up because this is not a budget meeting for next fiscal year. Okay, I say again, this is not a, a budget meeting for next fiscal year, and by now, we would have already been in about a month and a half of those wonderful meetings. Uh, and the proposal is, is towards the middle of May, there'll be another update to Mr. Carpenter and to the rest of us by the economic advisor to the governor, giving us a little more clarity on where next fiscal year's budget is. So, Mr. Carpenter, as he usually does, has already got a plan, but cutting expenses is one of them.
Okay.
And that's a million dollars. On top of that, I, I would just put out to you again that we do have a potential of losing a million dollars in FLO next year. Uh, the good news is, and I want to send a shout-out to Stuart Kidd and E- Economic Development, the, uh, the big businesses we have, and there are about twenty of them who give us most of our revenues, are still gainfully employed, though some of them are at sixty and some of them at seventy-five percent capacity. Investa, for example, Canfor, each of you have an industry in your sector that not at full capacity right now. So I just wanted you to know that, that we, we're not here to talk about next year's budget. Mr. Carpenter has brought that up, but the net reduction is a million dollars lost next year, maybe two, maybe two. Uh, Jimmy, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I, I take a little bit of a different view at it. I think the budget's very important when we talk about a million-dollar investment into our community. You know, what is it, about the last two to three months, that's where we collect most of our money, and we live off the, uh, borrowing from ourselves out of the reserve. Going forward, I, see, I, I don't look at it as losing a million dollars. I look at it as investing a million dollars into our local businesses. I look at it as what if we didn't put that million dollars into some of our local businesses? What, what revenue would we lose? Because, you know, they pay the high taxes. They pay the 6%, and, uh, I don't know, many of the...
Sometimes ten.
Sometimes ten. You're exactly right. So I look at that million dollars as a huge, huge economic, uh, investment into our community, and, and not something that we're gonna lose. And, uh, I, I'll say this too, I'm gonna make a prediction, and I want y'all to remind me this, next year this time, we're gonna be better off next year this time we've ever been in the history of, uh, Kershaw County.
Well, let me use that globe when you finish with it.
And I've been right pretty much all the time. Thank you.
Pretty much all the time?
He's getting humbled. All right, number six. Mr. Snodgrass, are you, are you done?
Making a judgment, I'm with Mr. Jones, that we're investing in our people, but we need to have a clear-eyed view that there's a, there's a possibility, there's a certainty of one million and a possibility of two. Okay. Then we go on to number six, if you're ready.
Task number six, Mr. Cornell, Councilman?
I have one question for Mr. Carpenter. What was the, uh, percentage decreased in revenues from oh-seven, oh-eight, oh-nine in that period that we weathered through then?
Um, I've got that on my desk. I don't know if I stuck it in the stack of papers. Hold on.
You got a stack of papers there.
Um, just roughly, as a reference point for what we've gone through already.
Our collection rate, uh, for taxes, and this is close if it's not spot-on, our collection rate for taxes was that we, um, we dropped down to about a ninety-five percent collection rate. Um, we've been, uh, generally speaking, traditionally, we operated about a ninety-seven and a half percent. Uh, this year, we were at ninety-nine percent collection rate. So, uh, it could drop, and that's, and I figured that into, um, my estimate for next year is going back to a ninety-five percent collection rate, uh, even though what Mr. Rainwater was indicating is that the impact of this recession will not be on property, whereas the last one was based on property and banks. This is a retail, uh, recession, and so that the impact on people paying their property taxes is expected to be less, I still used the ninety-five percent rate, which is what it was in the last recession. So I tried to be more conservative, not less.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
And, and, and Ben, before you get started, I just want to point out one more thing. A lot of our local sale option tax comes from grocery stores, Walmart, Lowe's, the big-box stores that we have here in Kershaw County. Am I correct by saying that?
Yes, sir.
And they're still open, man. They're, they're booming.
They're booming.
So I'm just gonna put that out there, so, may not be as bad as we may think.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first off, I think everybody worked really hard, and there's, uh, a huge amount of merit in this report and understanding what's going on in Kershaw County locally. Personally, I felt like we should have pursued, or I think councils should still consider a loan with some deferrals and, uh, just as relaxed as possible, which I'll talk about in Under New Business. But representing, um, the interests of the committee, I'd like to report on Section Six, under grant committee guidelines. I won't read it, uh, to you, but I would call your attention to a few things. The idea is to get some return on investment for Kershaw County, uh, citizens as a whole overall. Basically, we're taking, or considering taking, uh, the funds of sixty-six thousand people and giving them to the businesses of perhaps a couple hundred and, and some nonprofits, and trying to understand what value is there for Kershaw County in doing that. So in doing that, um, the committee suggested a limitation of ten thousand dollars in the amount to each particular applicant, with priority going to businesses that are obviously still operating. Uh, they talked about a particular number of twenty employees or less, businesses who can demonstrate that they've experienced harm due to, uh, COVID-19, and, um, some of this will end up being discretion to the committee of how exactly they demonstrate that. Mr. Tucker had pointed out previously in some of our meetings that some of the smaller mom-and-pop-type businesses, um, might be sole proprietorships. They might have the corporate form and the corporate veil protecting them, but you're not really sure. They may not have all the financial records that, uh, your typical larger business would have, and some of that may be in the, the committee's discretion. Um, I'd call your attention to, to draft applications that are attached to, uh, this report. The first one is two pages. It's based off of the City of Aiken model, which was a loan program, but it's been fashioned to, uh, to accommodate a grant application, and then you have another application as just two options that the council could look at. And this would be what would be received by the committee in considering awarding funds. There are some issues, um, though, which I'll, I'll talk about also in New Business, uh, that might relate to equal protection. I'd like some clarification from our, uh, county attorneys to make sure whatever the county does, um, just lines up with what's required by law, and based on carving out certain areas that can or cannot apply even for, uh, public monies. And that's what I have to report.
Okay. Well, I want, I want...
Just a clarification, uh, Sammy, um, uh, in keeping what Mr. Jones said, Kershaw County approved funds on fourteen April, that's...
Uh, that's just, that, that, that's just a date.
That's incorrect.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And so no funds will be approved today.
No, sir.
What we'll do during New Business is set aside funds, okay?
I'm sorry, what was the comment, Mr. Chairman?
The date.
If you look at, the first sentence on page, uh, five, six, A, it says, "On fourteen April, we approved funds." Well, we haven't had a chance to study this. So we'll do it at a, at a call meeting if we ever get to that point, okay?
Right, yeah. That, that, that date is very whatever y'all deem it to be necessary, that you wanna take action, so.
Thank you.
It's, it's, we just stuck something in there for today, so, um...
Mr. Tucker, I'd also mention, and Mr. Chairman, if I might, um, one of the main concerns of the committee was accountability and making sure that people use the funds appropriately, uh, to actually assist their businesses if they receive them. And there would be some monitoring, uh, agreement where they would have to show that they've complied with the terms of the grant, and if not, pay the grant back in full. So it does have some strings attached.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was gonna, I was gonna go there next, um, Councilman Cornell. Um, a- absolutely, and, and thank you, um, and let me say for the record that I was so unfair to Mr. Cornell. I was on him and the committee telling him two-page, two-page, and he brought out two pages like we requested, and then along came this guy with a five-page application. I won't say who it was, but, um, I do apologize, because you probably could have put a little bit more teeth in the other one.
Yeah, one of the tasks I asked y'all to undertake is best practices, and I appreciate y'all looking at other counties, cities, towns. Thank you very much. There's a lot of work put into this.
Yes, and we did do that. We, we only, we, we didn't only look at cities, towns, we looked at federal government. Um, there was a lot of, uh, researching done to go into this, but I wanna go to page six right quick, because that's what, um, Councilman Cornell just brought up, um, and it, it actually starts on page, um, five. It says, "Accounting must, uh, indicate how the grant funds were spent, including supporting documents, i.e. receipts, payroll, records, et cetera. Failed to submit these, uh, reports will result in the applicant being responsible for paying, uh, the grant back in full." Now, we've got to get with our legal counsel and figure out how we're gonna work that out, but that was some of the teeth that the committee thought needed to be in there to hold our, um, businesses, uh, responsible, uh, for the taxpayer dollars. So that's, I just wanted to make sure. And of course, uh, you see the summary and, um, and the eligible bill, the eligible applicants, and I think that's where Councilman Cornell may have some concerns when we get down to New Business. So with that being said, let's conclude, unless y'all have some questions. Okay. In concluding and recommending back to county council, possible response from the various local Kershaw County entities, the task force recommends the following. One million dollars should be taken from the county's emergency reserve to help businesses and organizations affected by COVID-19. Seven hundred and fifty thousand should be set aside for grants to small businesses as outlined in the guidelines section above. A hundred and ninety thousand should be set aside for the su- uh, support of nonprofits, and up to sixty thousand dollars should be set aside for administrative costs. Now, I think the other two are self-explanatory. Let me dive into the administrative costs before we moved out who is gonna be the recommended third party. Um, you're gonna need an accountant to oversee what's going on with the funds with the third-party person. That's in that cost, okay? And then, um, Ben brought this point up, I mean, he kinda, yes, sir, Mr. Al?
I want to ask Mr. Carpenter something. Mr. Carpenter, your staff can't handle this?
I think it would be better to have an outside third-party, keep an eye on it, sir. I think it just keeps the impartial, um, aspect of the whole thing there versus any implication that staff or, or, or elected officials might have any influence whatsoever. So I, I, it's, yeah, I would prefer not to.
I've heard your opinion. Now tell me why you think so.
Why I think that...
Yes.
Because of, of the perception outside. Could my staff actually do that? I don't have a CPA on staff, so if you want a CPA to put their imprimatur on it, I don't have a CPA on staff. I have very, uh, strongly competent finance people, but, uh, that's not necessarily the same. So they can't do audits, things like that.
This group that you said is gonna handle this, Mr. Tucker, they got a CPA on staff?
Well, they have their own CPA, but they will hire a local CPA, um, to handle this. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so if I can proceed on, um, so what we're looking at is, um, uh, the sixty thousand dollars is not just given upfront, it's gonna be based on about between seven and a half and eight percent of the monies that are approved. So let's say for some reason, um, we only divved out, uh, five hundred thousand. Well, that's gonna be based on the amount that was approved, um, not what, um, uh, the whole, uh, million or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Am I making sense? I, I wanna make sure you guys understand what the thought of the committee was, and this was Ben's baby, I'm, I'm giving credit for. He just wanted to make sure that, um, we weren't giving up all of the monies, and then, um, ten people apply. I think it's gonna be more than ten businesses apply, and then we paid, uh, sixty thousand dollars for ten people to apply... for ten people to apply for grants, which can only total up to about sixty thousand dollars. That'd be a very expensive service. So what we did is base it on what is approved. Now, do know that in the guidelines, it also speaks about, you know, several rounds. So what I think what this body has to do is set a time period, whether it's going to be on a thirty, sixty, ninety day, or is it just going to be on a thirty, sixty day. We did not recommend that, but I can tell you my personal recommendations, thirty days is not going to cut it. I don't think you can do your due diligence in thirty days and serve everybody who's going to be applying.
I agree.
And that's my reason for saying that.
I agree.
Yeah, so, and I don't think, I mean, any of the committee members disagree. You think thirty days? I just don't think it can happen that fast. So, and we do recommend that you get started immediately, so I'll be making some recommendations on special call meetings and things of that nature according to the administrator and legal counsel as quick as they can work. So third-party person that this committee is recommending would be the chamber, because we thought that that would be the best-suited organization that knows most to all of the businesses here in Kershaw County. And as you have heard, Ms. Amy, who is the executive director for the chamber, has said over and over is that they don't care if they're business members or not. They're serving this county. So, and I appreciate the impartiality. I really do, because this is no time to be drawing lines in the sand on who belongs to who. We need to help folks. So with that being said, she has some guidelines that her board is requesting that the county has to approve in order for her to take it, and she will not be a sitting member of the committee. She's going to be like the administrator over the committee, the one that actually cuts the checks, the one that actually takes the minutes and makes sure that stuff's available. So if we have any FOIA requests that was asked, we have a paper trail. And then you remember the part where they had to submit back the receipts for accountability? Well, that's going back to the chamber for them to collect that, and then we'll have that when and if needed. So that's kind of the duties. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vice Chair, and I understand that and I appreciate that, but as, and you brought it up, and I wanted to bring it up. I had it written right here in my notes, so I was thinking about it before you said it. Has anyone thought of how FOIA is going to be involved in this? Because you're going to have, and by the way, I agree with the private citizen committee group. I think it's the best way to go. However, things to need to think about, now you're going to have five committee members. This is why I'm so against comparing someone's savings. You're going to have five committee members that will have, they'll know and have access to the wealth and information of a lot of private businesses here, and that's why I think we certainly need to validate, we need to vet them, but when you start asking people for their private savings, you know, Mr. Tucker, you could be the best saver in the world, and we have equal businesses, and I'd be the worst saver in the world, going on trips, but yet still have my business. And we go through this disaster, well, you're going to be punished for being a good steward, and I'm going to be rewarded. You follow me? So that's why private savings, I just, I think that's too much of an outreach for government, and I would oppose that.
And this is something that we'll vet coming up here in just a little bit.
I understand, but I just wanted...
Get that out.
Yeah, just kind of get it out to you.
And let me say, the chamber will have no decision-making power, ability, or authority in who gets money.
They're going to write checks.
They're going to write checks.
We're paying sixty thousand dollars to write checks.
No, that's more than that. I mean, accounting fees coming out of that.
That made me feel a whole lot better.
Okay, she's got to provide the space for them to meet, record the minutes. One thing I can say about Ms. Amy now, when the doors close, that don't mean she stopped working.
Let me tell you something. I'm a big fan of Ms. Amy's. This has nothing to do with how I feel about her and the chamber. They're great people. I have support of the chamber when a lot of folks on this table has not.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, you know, her...
So it's not about whether I support.
Yeah.
She would be the one I would want to do. I just said, "We're paying sixty thousand dollars for someone to write the check."
Well, I don't want you to say that, because that's not true. There's more to it than that, and then she's got to collect the data and store the data, and there's a lot of responsibilities going on with that.
Here's where I'm at. I want as much money as possible to go to the local businesses, period.
Okay, and let me say where I'm at. We've got folks volunteering for this committee, because the members that I'm about to get to next have committed to do this, okay? And they're giving up their time. We can't ask everybody with more responsibilities to do stuff for free for us. And I know you want to get as much money to the small business, and so I, but I also, I don't want to give an irresponsible person funds to distribute, especially in this amount that I may have questions or concerns on their work ethics and their ability to conduct it.
I tell you, look at that five committee member you have.
Yes, sir.
I think they're going to do a fantastic job.
But they're going to need guidance.
I have confidence in each and every one of them.
Because see, here's the advantage that they're going to have, as Ms. Amy said on the committee. So she knows how we were thinking, the minutes are available, so when they have any concerns, she can address them without having to come back to the committee or council, because the less we keep them out of our lives, the more smoother this is going to go. Y'all can agree or disagree, but I'm going to tell you, as elected officials, we can muck up something. Yes, sir, Mr. Al?
Stipulations that the chamber has that our board wants us to approve, I want to see them in writing. I don't want to hear about them.
Well, she'll come up in a minute, and we'll hear about it.
No, I said, "I want to see them in writing."
Let me finish, please. You'll get them in writing, Al. Let me finish. But she's going to tell, so you'll know, but she will get them in writing for you. I don't know if she has them in writing today, but you'll get them in writing. Paper and pencil is not scarce. Would you share with the committee, I mean, with the council, please?
Mr. Bozard, so they are kind of in writing in the report in that the chamber will not, my board asked that I not sit as the chair of the oversight committee that determines who receives these funds and who doesn't. So that's stipulated in this report. They also asked by recommendation of our attorney that I, again, not chair, because it wasn't appropriate for me to decide how these funds should be distributed as per this report, then to vote on who gets those funds, and then ultimately cut the check. There's too much conflict and overlap there, so that was on recommendation of our attorney. So that is hence the recommendation that I would act in, our organization would act in an administrative role, not sit as a voting member of the oversight committee, that we would distribute the funds based on the recommendations or decisions of that committee.
Okay, Al, you good? So we'll see that in writing as a part of what we go forward on the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, right quickly, Ms. Amy?
Yes.
I can't think of anybody that would do a better job than you, and I just want to make sure you understand that, how I feel. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Other comments?
No, I just want to say that we'll definitely get those stipulations, Mr. Bozard, in writing to you, and it will be in the package when we go to meet.
Thank you.
Okay?
Good. Sammy, you ready to put a bow around this thing and move on?
Look here, I've been ready. I've never talked this much before in a council meeting.
All right, there are those who disagree with you.
Not from this side of the podium anyway.
So where are we, on page seven?
Well, page seven, which should be the final page. These are the members on the overall location where they live. They will not be applicants. The committee is diverse. It's got minorities. It has females. It has males. So it has, it reaches Lugoff, Elgin, Lugoff and Elgin. It has members that live in Camden downtown and in the Westville almost area, out off of Lockhart Road, as well as up Highway Ninety-seven. So I think it kind of covers as much as we can cover with five people. The reason why we said to alternates, we don't know who may get sick due to the virus or just get sick, and we don't want the committee to fall down to one or two members. We want it to be functional, so it can run like a well-oil wheel and well-grease wheel, and it can get the job done as quickly and as efficiently as possible. Mr. Bozard?
Yes, I want to agree with Mr. Jones. I wanted to see all the money we can go to the businesses.
Yes, sir.
That's why I asked Mr. Carpenter if his staff couldn't handle this distribution. That's where I was going. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. And let me, you brought up a good point, Mr. Bozard. We're in contact with a couple of banks, and we're thinking as soon as we get the word, because they've got to run it up the poll, but we'll have it by the time we call a special meeting, that they'll be able to take this money and put it to the bank and probably do what we would call a good gesture or in-kind or community service by not charging any fees or anything to have that, those checks and stuff dispersed. Ms. Amy is working on that with me, and we'll have you an answer back ASAP if that's the will or where the council wants to go.
Other comments? There was two different options in the back.
Yes, sir.
We're going to come to that later.
Yeah, in New Business.
In the New Business.
Right, because we have to give direction to the attorney and administrator.
Yeah, but it talks about option A and option something or other B in terms of grant versus...
Oh, you want me to go over what's the difference?
No, no. When do you want to get to that discussion? You want to do that during New Business?
I mean, Councilman Cornell, yeah, went over that one, but let me, I can go over, let's see, I don't want to make appendix, what is it called?
A.
A. Councilman Cornell went over. There was two pages. Appendix A, one was a grant and one was a loan. He went over that, and then...
Yeah, went over it, but the point is, is I think the discussion is a decision between a grant and a loan. Do you want to do that during New Business?
Yes, sir, I would prefer to do that during New Business.
Okay, everybody okay with that? All right, okay, we're tracking. What else you got, Sammy?
And just want to say, because we did take in consideration of FOIA, on the applications we initially had EINs and social security numbers, we took that off. And that's why in the terms and conditions, it says that you must sign pertinent information in order to get your monies, because we're going to need those things. So we, this is very transparent to answer your question, Councilman Jones, on the information, because there's nothing on here that's what I would call sensitive to the public's information. I mean, most of this stuff, they can go on the website to the Secretary of State and pull it up, but it's information needed for the committee.
Okay, good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we got a bow around that. Let's move on to the next item. Thank you very much indeed to everyone on the committee, and we'll be just back in just in time, Vic. We move now to the next item on the agenda, which is the proclamation for a Fair Housing Month. We're going from a rather important proclamation. I'll read it, and then we'll take a motion. Whereas April eleventh marks the fifty-second anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States, and whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap, or familial status, and national origin, and whereas a housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity, Housing Month by Kershaw County Council. Can we have a motion to approve that?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snodgrass, second from Mr. Bozard. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify, first of all, by Mr. Gardner, if you're awake, give me a signal.
I am awake.
Let it be recorded. He's awake, and he said yes, and all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Thank you very much, and I'll get that signed, Mary, right away. Thank you. Next item is an ordinance, second reading, item number one, on tab E and on the board for you, of an ordinance authorizing execution and delivery of a filo in Morning Star Blue, known as Project Walnut A. Mr. Carpenter or Mr. DeBoz, please?
Mr. Chairman, members, council, this is the second reading of a filo agreement between Kershaw County and a company that is known for our purposes as Project Walnut. They have previously presented to us a request, and first title only, they've asked that we continue moving this project forward and have asked for a second reading today.
Very good, unnamed at that point, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And I've gotten a number of media inquiries. Can we have a motion, a first motion and a second, please?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snodgrass, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Cornell. Any discussion? And we don't know what the timelines are on this. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's been two or three months between the first reading and second, so no telling how long between second and third, God willing.
And we still don't know the name of the company, so there we are. All right, I'm ready to call the vote. Mr. Gardner, you want to make the first entry?
Yes.
Okay, and all others signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, Mary, with Mr. Gardner signifying yes. The next item is item number two under ordinances, second reading of an ordinance with apple tree knot, also walnut, but this is a walnut B. It's a tab F, and Mr. Carpenter again.
Mr. Chairman, members, council, this is just a different part of the same project. It's broken down into two different fee agreements, however, but it is part and parcel of the overall project.
Okay, very good. With that, we'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Snodgrass, a second? Need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bozard. Any discussion? With that, we're ready to move to a vote. Mr. Gardner, would you care?
Yes.
Yes from Mr. Gardner, and all others signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and it passes on the second reading. We move to the third item, an emergency ordinance. I'll ask you guys, if you don't have a hard copy, I think you do, but for you, Tom, at home, it's on page sixty-six on your electronic pad, and it's an ordinance that's been offered to us to how to conduct these meetings, as I mentioned at the start. I'll read the title, "An Emergency Ordinance Providing for Conducting Electronic Meetings and Public Hearings for Kershaw County Council and for All Kershaw County Boards and Commissions." It's at tab G, and you should have a hard copy. If you're not, it's on page sixty-six, as I said. Can someone introduce this? Would this be Mr. DeBoz?
Mr. Chairman, yes, this ordinance provides that you can have electronic meetings. The council's having one now, but this applies to other boards and commissions. Planning Commission would be a prime example.
Okay, and we'll get into the details after we motion it up.
Yes.
Okay. With that, let's have a motion to get started. Can I have a first?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, a second?
Second, yeah.
Second from Mr. Cornell. And would you further introduce it with some of the key provisions, Ken?
Yes, it provides for electronic meetings of county council, which is already provided, but also other county agencies and boards. But also, just important, it provides for public hearings. So now, a public hearing, of course, you come before council, you sign up, you stand at the podium. Due to the distancing requirements from the state and the federal level, that's not possible. So this provides that you can have comments on a public hearing. Madam Clerk, I believe it provides they would email, could email to you an hour before the meeting their comments, which would then be read into the record, or they could mail them by US mail. And of course, they would have to be received the day of the meeting. So what would happen would be our notices of public hearings will now change, and our notices of public meetings will now change to tell people how they can electronically listen and how they can electronically comment for public hearings. That's what it provides, instead of appearing in person.
I'm sure there should be some comments. Could someone, any comments here? Mr. Tucker, back in the back.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. DeBoz, this is for you. I said, I heard you said that they could email up to, well, they could email an hour before the meeting. Where is that exactly at in these three pages?
Page three, G.
Okay. Three, G, and...
And H.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that Ms. Mary's not getting minutes, comments up to the last minute. So if it's not in by four-thirty, then we won't take it.
Or today would be twelve o'clock, yes, but it would be in the public. The notices now of public hearings will contain a reference to this requirement that, and of course, the public hearings have the time of the meeting in them, so it would say, if you want to have a anticipated in the public hearing, you can do so by US mail or email, and it'll give the US mail address and email.
Of course, it also limits it to 300 words, which is about, takes about three minutes, four minutes to read 300 words, and it provides if over 10 people should submit comments, that the chairman can edit or paraphrase the comments, so that the timeframes will be basically the same as they are now.
All right, I think I see, go ahead, Jim.
Yes, sir. Uh, that, that answered my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Carpenter, a question for you, and this may be kind of getting into operational things, and I, I so apologize, and I apologize for Nathan and IT for what I'm about to s- to suggest, because they may have enough to do, but is it worth, uh, when you say email, one, would we create a unique email address just for this, and two, maybe a form on the website that was already, uh, coded to not accept more than 300 words, and then they would hit submit?
Well, email would not be a problem to just create a new email address for it, though it might add a layer of confusion for people who are already maybe used to communicating through Ms. Sigler.
Okay.
For it. As far as creating a form on the website, um, I'm sure we can create a form and attach it, um, to it. It's not something that would be on the front page, so they'd have to kind of dig into, to find it under...
Gotcha.
Um, our, our openness, things like that, but, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, and again, I'm just thinking out loud at this point, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Other comments? Uh, that, that was an important comment, uh, maybe somebody would want to talk about this. Suppose we had 20 comments come in, and we had 30 minutes set aside, then, uh, we get into me and Mary perhaps sifting through, uh, so that's got to be some kind of latitude in there for the chairman to move the business along, but we, we've never been at that spot before, and I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Uh, Jimmy, over to you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. I, uh, I just say we move forward with it as it is, and if we see where there's a glitch somewhere, we'll certainly fix it.
Absolutely.
Um, but I, I do want to end on this by saying this, um, I think this is, I'm really proud of what we're doing here. This is making sure that we keep the public involved, that they, that we're, we're doing things with a lot of sunshine on it, and I, and I appreciate that, so this is a very good ordinance that you drafted up, Mr. DeBoz.
Mr. Morgan was the...
Mr. Morgan, excuse me.
Yeah, Tommy got that one. Yeah, Ben, please.
Mr. Chairman, uh, one question for our legal counsel. So I see in our last whereas, where we're stating the purpose why we're doing this, it says it's been hereby determined that there exists a public emergency affecting life, health, and safety of the citizens of Kershaw County. Um, is that enough for us in the actual body of what's codified? Or do we need to include that language saying that when there is in fact a public emergency affecting life, health, and safety only, you can have an electronic meeting? We don't want to have electronic meetings, uh, for any other reason, I would think, if there's an infectious disease or something like that where we're prevented, uh, or if for whatever reason a natural disaster prevents us from gathering in one place, and somehow electronics were still working, I guess you could conduct a meeting. Is that required to be, um, listed under section one, or just in the whereas is enough?
Uh, Mr. Cornell, I think the whereas is a findings, a fact, factual findings, and of course, they have the national, the state, and also references Kershaw County's emergency ordinance, which itself declared a state of emergency, but overriding this is, this is only going to be good for 60 days. And should the state of emergency end within 60 days, then of course, before the state of emergency ends, Kershaw County could revoke the ordinance, so if the state of emergency is going to end three weeks from now, then Kershaw County can act appropriately by another emergency ordinance, still in the state of emergency, revert back. But if nothing happens in 60 days, this just disappears automatically.
Thank you, I'm okay with it as is then.
Yeah, it looks like we're ready to move to a vote. Uh, Sammy, what about you, sir?
I just want to address one concern that you brought up. Um, you were talking about if we just got, um, a barrage of, uh, requests, um, we don't know them in time, so why can't we, um, do first come, first served, because they're all going to be date and timestamped as they come in, and that's always a fair process, um, you know, you can't take 30 people and, um, and give them three minutes apiece, because we'll be here all night.
I think we let it go, Mr. Chairman, as it is.
Yeah.
Because we can, we can sit here, predict, and read the crystal ball.
Well, I'm just putting that out. I don't say we have to change the ordinance, but I'm just, you know, that was something he put out for his live, uh, think tank, so I'm, I'm chiming in, but, you know, uh...
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
One of the solutions could be that, um, the chairman could simplify the question if we had that many in order.
I think that's a dangerous way to go personally. Because then we're, we're redoing the conversation of the person that was asking the question. I, I could not agree with that at all, but thank you, that was a good suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, there's two things going on here. They're going to be put in the record. This just deals with reading the actual comments into the record. You're going to have the actual comments, even if they're 30, and all of them are 300 each. You, the council members, are going to have them actually before you, and they're going to be in the record. What we're dealing with here is reading them into the record, and we only allow 30 minutes, so if 20 people sign up now, they get a mint and a half each, and so we're limiting the number of words people say already. So it does say, if more than 10 comments are received, the chairman is authorized. It doesn't say has to, it says he can paraphrase or, or, um, read just portions of it into the record, but it'll actually be in the record, and you will actually have a copy of it.
Well, it looks like we'll be in, as Jimmy said, we'll, we'll work it out as we get to it, but we clearly need to not tamper or dampen down the comments from our citizens, period. That's a commitment.
And, and let me, and I, I know that is not what Ms. Mary meant. So made that clear, I know exactly what she meant, it was a good thought, it was good thinking out loud, but I agree, we need to.
Okay, well, I think we're at a point where we can vote. Uh, with that, we go to Mr. Gardner, you have the honor, sir?
I am in favor.
Very good, well, he is in favor, and all those signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, Mary. Thank you very much, uh, Tommy and Ken. Now we move now to new business, grievance committee appointment, item number one, over to you, uh, Vic, it's at page 70 in your electronic media, and it's on the screen for those of you present. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members, council, uh, we've had a vacancy on the grievance committee. As you know, the grievance committee is a panel of employees that are empowered to hear grievances brought by other employees against a decision made by management. Uh, this vacancy, uh, we have nominated to you, Ms. Elaine Dukes, in our Public Works Department to, uh, fill this vacancy.
Can we have a motion to nominate Ms. Dukes?
Make a motion.
Uh, Mr. Bozard, second from Mr. Snodgrass, any discussion? Seeing there is none, Mr. Gardner? He votes yes, and all those in favor so signify, it's unanimous, uh, Mr. Snodgrass, good, and, and, and Ms. Dukes is appointed. Thank you. We move now to, uh, the second item under new business, ad hoc committee update, tab I, and tab I on page 71 is the order I wrote for the task, uh, force or the committee, and so you've got a hard copy in front of you, so you don't need to go there, but Tom, you can refer to it if you want. It's on page 71, as I said. All right, with that, uh, we're going to open the discussion on a way forward. Uh, Sammy, you want to lead this, or what?
Yes, sir, uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, be more than happy to. I think, uh, there are some points that, um, some of you had, and there's some, um, definitely some different recommendations. Um, let me start off by saying, um, let's don't lose the baby with the bathwater here, um, in this discussion. Our goal, in my opinion, right now, is to give the administrator to my right and our legal counsel to my left, Mrs. DeBoz, uh, a way forward to craft up some, an ordinance, and then we can come back and chew it up at our special call meeting. I, I, I want, I want that to be where we can agree to get something that makes sense to a little bit of all of us, to go forward, and then we can do our amendments at the special call meeting. Because if not, we're going to be here all night, and then they're not going to have a sense of direction where to go, and we're going to have no ordinance to call a special meeting.
Well, uh, just to summarize, as we said, we got this last night, uh, we still got some studying to do. We're starting, I'm learning stuff here every minute. Uh, we agreed to the report, which we got, and now he is proposing that we give a task to these gentlemen to come back in with an ordinance, and then I'll do a call meeting. Is that what you just said?
Yes, sir, that's what I just said, and let me add to that. I know you just got this, but you know this has been a hot button item since, uh, March the 26th. Y'all are very smart, gentlemen, and it was good to hear your voice on that mic. It sounds so much better right here. That was a sidebar, but, um, so I said that, uh, I say that to say this, um, I do not want to belay this. I do not want this to get kicked down the road like a can. I expect for us to be gentlemen, and whether you like the whole project, or you like none of the project, both your heart and your conscience, but I think that we need to push this forward to, uh, best, um, policy that we can possibly do and best circumstance that we're willing to do as a body.
Okay.
And then, um, move forward. I just don't want to, um, belay this, I just, uh...
So I think that was a yes?
Yes, sir. Well, I, I answered that the first time before I gave that explanation.
All right, but there were a couple of loose ends that we agreed we were going to talk about. One of them has been, uh, bringing up the loan versus the grant, but Mr. Jones had his hand up, sir, Mr. Jones.
Well, I was going to say, you know, we have, we have two options before us.
Yes, sir.
So if we're not going to take a vote tonight, how do we?
Consensus, we did, we do, we do so much right here, consensus.
Yeah, I, I think consensus will work, um, and then we deal with it in, at mid-moon.
Because I don't, I don't like either one at it.
Wait a minute, Tom, I got Mr. Jones speaking, hang on a minute. Go ahead, Tom, Jimmy.
I don't particularly like either one of them 100%, but both of them have good points, but I know that your committee voted on one of these.
Well, what we did, and let me explain that.
Both of them?
We, we, well, on the application, we did, because we thought it was just fair. Now, I will be, um, you know, straightforward with you, and it's in the minutes, um, the majority of the committee, four of us out of the seven, voted for a grant. Okay, y- yesterday when we got to doing this, because we didn't, um, get a chance to get everything out to the committee folks, um, over the weekend, and they had just received a lot of this yesterday, that, um, we, we agreed to submit both applications, but everything else in there, we're, we're in agreement to, um, to, to pretty much in tune. It's some little changes some of us might want to make, but, you know, that's why we get, like I told Mr. Cornell, get a second bite at the apple now.
Well, I have a question.
I have an answer.
Okay, you had a four to three vote, and you still bring both of them, why did you even vote?
That's democracy, do you, Councilman Jones, I'm not here to...
Why you just bring both of them before us?
I'm not, I'm not here to bury anybody's thoughts.
No, 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 I'm not either, I just, I, I just need some clarification on that, with all due respect.
I, I just gave it to you. We, we just thought to be fair to everybody that we bring both applications here, and, and I have no problem with that. I want Councilman Cornell to, to state his, his position. I want, um, Councilman Snodgrass to state his, I'll state mine, and then we'll, we'll, we'll have consensus as, as a body, and we'll move forward. I don't think we need to draft both into the ordinance, I, I will say that, but what's wrong with having choices?
Well, that's why the chairman appointed that hot committee to make a decision and bring it to us.
And we did, that's our, that's our decision.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Uh, I've got, no, I'll, I'll take care of this, Sammy, I think I got it. Uh, Mr. Gardner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, uh, you have a committee, uh, drawn into retarded waters, and you've come up with, uh, a very good plan. I do have a couple, or mainly one, is, uh, is part of it, and your funding, I don't disagree with the $60,000 for the add-in to 190,000 for the charities and nonprofits, those people on the front line providing food, um, field services, and, uh, 190,000 dollars to go a long way to help people.
Yeah, the $750,000, I don't disagree with the $750,000. I do have a problem with the $15,000 grants. Uh, $15,000 grants only services 50 businesses. If 50 people show up on $15,000, that money is depleted. You identified in your report that 46 businesses were already closed in Camden and Elgin, and 34 had altered their hours. So that's 80 businesses right now. The chairman identified several farmers, many, many farmers, that fall into that category, and there are countless other businesses that fall in there, and undoubtedly, we could end up with 150 businesses. That $5,000 apiece would deplete the $750,000. I'm afraid that if we go in there with $15,000 and grant $15,000 to people in the beginning, every time you grant $15,000, you eliminate two businesses, essentially. So I'm concerned, I think $15,000 is too much to start with. I, I would say $5,000 of grants and, you know, put a timetable on having applications in, and then at the end of that time, if you, if you send out money for $500,000, $600,000, then you could have a round two, you already got their information, would take less time. That's just my concerns, is that $750,000. I agree with Mr. Jones, we need to get this to as many businesses and in their hands, and I think $15,000 grants, uh, would limit the number of businesses that we can help. Thanks.
Yeah, a million dollars is not what it used to be. Uh, let me summarize for those who didn't hear. You were saying $15,000 on the front end would rapidly deplete, so is there a, a plan where you might start it in a lower number? Is that right, Tom? Did I get it right, Tom?
Yes, that is correct.
Sammy, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, first of all, y'all need to go to page five, uh, underneath 6A, because that's not what the ca- what the committee recommended to you, okay? Let's, let's do a little reading, a little listening, no offense, Tom. It says the SBSG grant could be awarded an amount up to $10,000 in an effort to mitigate losses experienced by our small business communities. Don't mean they're going to get 10, but they can only get maximum of 10. That 15 comes out of the random that was written by the chairman. That is not what the committee recommended by. We had the same discussions that you're having right now. Hold on, let me finish, the same discussions you're having.
You agree with Tom.
Well, I saw, let me finish, please.
Tom, I think he agrees with you.
You, you cut me off, child, I don't like to get cut off.
I, I got you, okay, I see where is this, so, so you're talking about just $10,000 now? Is that what you, is maximum of 10?
Right, Mr. Gardner.
Okay, well, I still think that 10's too much to start with, because then, there again, you're still eliminating. I, and I know, I know different businesses are going to have different needs, but at the same time, if we've got 150 businesses, we don't want to eliminate anybody from the start, but if we've got 150 businesses that are in need, and we give them $5,000 each, then you, you know, then, uh, we may have 160, 170, $750,000 may not be enough, and I know some people will come in and ask for five, and some people will come in and ask for 10, and some people may ask for two, but I think there's, I don't think we should eliminate businesses before we start, that's just my point.
Well, well, Mr. Gardner?
Uh, Mr. Tucker respond, okay, Tom? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gardner, you're absolutely right, and that's why we put up two. That's going to be the discretion of the committee, those five folks that you see back there, they would do that once they take the application and assess the needs. You know, you can have a business that's, um, um, small, um, I'll use mine, for example. Uh, $10,000 would be great, but 2,500 would don't sure help me a lot in paying my, my rental and my, um, and my, um, utilities and, and things of that nature, and an employee or two, if I had one. I don't have as much overhead as say your business that has, where your light bill's high, you've got bigger, uh, storefrontage and things of that nature, so, um, we're not going to say everybody's going to get that $10,000. We didn't say that everybody is going to, um, get $8,000. Uh, that's, that's where we have to put the faith into the, um, into the committee, which is, uh, the, the approval committee, advisory committee, to make that sound judgment, and they will be interviewing these folks, so they can ask the tough questions and get the answers and vet their application.
How many?
I understand that, I understand that part, but, but considering, you know, the effect on some businesses, if you want to take my business, for example, which I'm not qualified to get this, but my business, uh, is off about $50,000 since March 1st, and I, you know, $50,000 for a little business like mine is, is a, is a hit to gut, and there's, there's a lot of others who are worse than me. Uh, so just, just to say that, you know, if, if some, some people come in and their needs, and that committee could say, yeah, you get $10,000, you get $10,000, you get $10,000, so same thing applies. You, you're, you know, you get to a point where, you know, you get the first 100, you take all the money. And, and all I'm saying is, you know, let's identify it, and let's, let's take a good hard look at it before we put a number on it, and we give out all the money before all, all the people that are, uh, are served.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Uh, other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I, I actually have to agree with Mr. Gardner. I like the $5,000 better if we're going to stay at the $1 million. If we can get more than $1 million, maybe we can go more, but I do agree that I'd like to see as many businesses as possible be able to participate in this.
Well, well, this is what we heard as the committee when we were, when we were meeting, is that you, you take, uh, you take someone's business that's got about eight, uh, employees or, or 10 employees, and by the time you do payroll and you pay, uh, the taxes on that, you've eaten up pretty much all that $10,000 for a week of salary, and so, second?
About six weeks.
Um, well, just keep multiplying, it'd be 60,000. Um, so that's some of the thought that, that went into this. You know, we can, we can ask that that in the ordinance, just have a line there and we can fill in a number. Or whatever the number is today, don't mean it has to stay. That's, that's, that's why I don't want to get bogged down in that. If you don't agree or you, or you disagree, be prepared to make amendments. We'll have this in time where we can make amendments. Yes, Ms. Snar?
Uh, go ahead. Well, let me first say that the other piece of this is the federal plan is kicking in. The plan, the federal plan is kicking in. There's, I just got another note. CPA in Lugolf just down the street from you, Jimmy, has already got, handled $1.5 million. So the federal plan is kicking off, and it's not too big a risk for 5,000. I, I find myself on the 5,000 side. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Snargrass.
Just a point of clarification. Mr. Tucker, you're, you're asking the council today, either through a vote or probably just through common consent.
No vote today.
Common, common consent that we just agree that we want to do something.
Right.
Is, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we want to do something. Whether it's five or 10, we're not gonna settle that here today.
So you're asking that we not get in the weeds. You're just asking that we all agree that we feel that we should do something based on the report that the committee has given.
Yes, sir.
And this something would be drafted by a legal and then come back to us, and then we could get into the weeds. Is that what you're asking us?
Absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to.
Thank you.
That's not a curtail discussion. Mr. Conor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, in the appendix or Exhibit A, both of the applications are grant-related applications. As I mentioned before, one of them was based off of a loan application that I thought was a very good model with the city of Aiken. It was a $10,000 loan that they had partnered up with a local federal bank. And, and anyway, it, both of them are grant application samples that you can look at and consider. Mr. Tucker's right. There was essentially a four to three vote, four leaning towards a grant and three towards a loan. And I'd like to describe that. Since it's not included in the report, I think it's important for council to consider and understand some of the meaningful discussion that we had.
Yes.
So you've heard about a grant proposal before you, just talking generally about the city of Aiken's model, which seems to work pretty well. It was essentially funds that were secured by council. What I would propose is we use a million dollars and set it in a secured account that any lender, whoever we could partner up with, I understand there are some now who would do in-kind check writing. Perhaps they'd have lower transaction fees for each loan that was closed. But you set that, those funds in trust to security on each loan, so the risk is virtually zero for any lender. And I'd propose at some point in the future, it'll all come by amendment, but just for consideration now, a 24-month loan, we can pick a very low interest rate. I don't know, 0.5% or 1%. Defer all interest and payments for 12 months. So that gives local business an opportunity to get on their feet and, and generate their pipeline of revenue over about a year. And they could look at paying it back over a year. I made that suggestion in consideration of the fact that we are looking at, I think, some shortfalls coming in the future. Mr. Carpenter mentioned a million-dollar reduction in revenue anticipated next year. Perhaps that will be offset by some reduction in costs, but not really sure what those will be. And then we also have the Prisma Health EMS issue, where we're pretty certain if that goes through, there's gonna be a million-dollar shortfall. So in view of a possible $2 million shortfall for next budget year and giving away a million dollars, it, it just seems inconsistent to me, knowing that there, there are these very serious issues in the future, and we're talking about possible funding for life safety issues. That's why I would lean towards loan. Now, if you could partner up with a local bank, you'd probably end up with a lower transaction cost per loan because that's their core competency. That's what they do as a business. They, they arrange, vet and get loans approved, and you can still have final approval by a committee or something like that. So I just wanted to mention that for consideration as opposed to the grant model. Few other things. Since the committee did overall recommend the grant, and you have language in here, this would be for Mr. DeBose and Mr. Morgan. On page six of the report, where it lists ineligible applicants, one thing I just want to make sure that we are, are clear on, and, and by that, I mean legally safe and recommended, where it says ineligible applicants, since these are public funds going towards some type of public use, do you get away from equal protection concerns by having the funds go to a third party? And, or would the county still be at risk? Can you even limit them in a particular way?
Mr. Connel, your question is, by having a third party, does that insulate or dissolve the county as a public entity? And I do think we need to take a look and see how FOIA Freedom of Information Act applies. Because as it stands now, you have public money. Then the public money by legislation and emergency ordinance, that's gonna be legislation, is going to be, the parameters of its use are gonna be delineated. And then the money is going to be recommended by a public body. The committee is appointed by county council, so it's a public body. So you kind of get to the quacks like a duck, and looks like a duck, walks like a duck. So it's public, public, public all the way through. And so the committee could very well be a public body. Then if it's a public body, then of course FOIA applies. Notice of meetings, minutes, accessibility to the public. And then you have an issue about the application, because it does have private information in it. Ask about tax returns. That's protected. That's private. And so, so we need to be cognizant of it. Now, the Freedom of Information Act does protect proprietary information. But then you get into how does this all interface, the vetting process of giving the loans and maintaining this private information, which is going to be collected by a public body? You can do that. Cities get business license applications. They have private information on them. They're not required to disclose that. But it's something we do need to vet, Mr. Connel, you're correct. The FOIA aspects of it. And then we need to vet the equal protection or due process aspects of it, non-discriminatory, same thing. To making sure the ineligible applicants, there's a governmental reason they're ineligible. Assuming they have less than 20 employees. And some of them, fraternal organizations, adult-oriented businesses, lobbyists, they, they deal with public entities, liquor stores, some of them are, in my opinion, apparently ineligible for governmental reasons. Liquors are, sell liquors are licensed. Privilege is not a right. But anyway, but we just need to take a look at that, too. Making sure they're all ineligible. And it says included but not limited to. So if the committee were to limit other businesses, they would have to have a rational, non-discriminatory public purpose to do so. You're correct. Those two aspects would need to be vetted.
Yeah, and just for example, if, if you pick a number out of a hat for employees that's facially neutral, it's whether or not you have 20 employees, and, and that's not a necessarily a basis for discrimination. But anyway, I encourage us to look at that real close, because you don't want to do something that's well-intended and have a bunch of consequences down the road, whether it goes towards the grant model or there is a loan and somehow there's strings attached. And then the last thing I was gonna mention, Mr. Chairman, this time, was we'd also brought up, and I mentioned some ideas about maybe deferring the tax payment on real property or rebating or refunding previously paid taxes for those who've come in. To me, that seemed like a very clean and easy to administrate idea. You wouldn't need a lot of other administrative costs or transaction costs in that. It just seemed clean. I know that would be based off of real property ownership, because I understand the general fund primarily comes from real property revenues, and that's what, what the emergency fund is comprised of. But that idea didn't, didn't catch hold in our committee. But, you know, it's something I'd like for council to consider as a possible.
Can we do it, Mr. Connel? I mean, I don't know.
I think it's possible. I mean, we're taking commingled funds, and we're looking at giving them to a bunch of businesses locally. I don't, it seems much cleaner to say, well, you paid $5,000 last year, here's your $5,000 back, instead of taking commingled funds and doing the same thing.
Yeah, Mr. Tucker.
All right, let me comment on the last thing that Mr. Connel said. Sounds real clean, a little bit more difficult than that. One of the other primary reasons is why this committee did not recommend that is because most of your small business rent property. So it goes back to the property owner. How does that help the business?
But I was of the thought, we can't do that.
Well, it, it's complicated, but I'm just asking you a simple question. If, if I rent, which I do, and you're helping the property owner, what good that done me?
Well, I mean, there are property owners that operate small businesses as well.
Well, I understand that, but most small businesses rent. There's not a lot of small businesses that own their, their space.
My, my point is, Mr. Tucker, this may not be a one-size-fits-all model. There are some people who might actually prefer that. And I think it could be a little bit cleaner. But just for council's consideration.
Thank you.
I, I think we've kind of covered the waterfront. Let me just make sure, Mr. Gardner, Tommy, your points made?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I just want to ask the editor of this paper, Tommy and Ken, have you all got enough to do some lawyerly magic? Are you ready to go? You have questions?
Mr. Chairman, let me just, I had it just a minute ago. I was looking, I was reviewing your appointment of the ad hoc committee, which you have the authority to do that, of course, under the ordinance. And in your recommendation, you say that the committee should make a report, a recommend, said any recommended use must be approved by county council. And you task them to recommend back to Kershaw County Council. And so they've done that. And so it seems it may be a starting point, this is only a starting point, as Mr. Tucker says, maybe the starting point would be their recommendation. And that's only a starting point. I mean, the variables, everybody's indicated the variables, the amount for each business, the total overall amount, the allocation within the overall amount, the uses within the overall amount. It seems to me that Mr. Morgan and I, as a beginning point, can use your ad hoc committee and the recommendation as a beginning point. Get the ordinance to everybody. And then people can ask, we'll help you do amendments if you want to, or you can do them from the floor. But I think that would be the beginning point.
Okay.
Mr. Tucker, is that your understanding?
Yes, sir, and I think that's a little bit more cleaner, and we don't get bogged down here today trying to vet out everything that we want to see, and then we can make the amendments. But let me do add, Mr. DeBose, that it is the ad hocs vote and majority vote at that to do the application. And in that application, we took out that pertinent information. We don't have tax returns. We don't have profit and loss sheets. That is pretty clean. It probably could use your, your eyes and Tommy's eyes to clean it up a little bit more, but it's pretty clean. And that was one of the reasons that we, we, we want to go with that. That it's a grant, but it also took out a lot of that pertinent information.
Is option B your recommendation?
It's option two.
Option two, excuse me. Option two is your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's helpful. Mr. Bozart, we want to close this out. What have you got?
I would like to address this as a good deal for the businessman. My second thing I want to address is, Mr. Carpenter, come November, and these people got laid off and don't have jobs to pay their taxes, what are we gonna do?
Well, Mr. Bozart, the tax notices still, by law, have to go out. Tax notices upon being received, they must by law pay them by a specific date. After that date, penalties are incurred. It would be my expectation that we would ask the treasurer to waive the penalties for late payment of taxes. But we don't have the ability to eliminate the taxes. So I would look at requesting a waiver of the penalties for late payment.
In other words, when it comes time, we're gonna take their houses and land. This is helping the business people. It ain't helping these citizens out here do nothing.
That's not what he said, but.
That's pretty much what he said.
Mr. Bozart, I think it's statutory. I think it comes from the state of South Carolina from the legislature. The taxing scheme that you employ, you use, is not of your own making. You, you, it's not of your, you did not legislate the way taxes are taxed. You legislate the millage of the county, but you don't legislate the millage of schools or the city or any of the, or governmental entities that look off fire district. And the legislature has laws about how that works.
I understand that, Mr. DeBose, but that don't answer my question. We're helping the businessman, but we ain't doing nothing for the citizens that don't have a job and might not have, be able to pay their taxes come November.
Then I, then I think the legislature has to address that.
That's something we need to look at.
Okay, we will. All right, other comments? Tom, you good? All right.
I'm good.
Good. I think the, the task force has done its job, and it can be dissolved, Mr. DeBose. So the task force, Sammy, you're back to vice chairman, all right? Thank you, everybody on the committee, and then we'll work at a call meeting. And we look forward to hearing when you got something ready. And I want to give, make sure we give the council enough time to see the product before we show up and we follow the rules of FOIA, and we get a call meeting as soon as we possibly can.
Ms. Chairman, on that same subject, if I may, what's, what's the, I know you're saying as soon as they can, but I would like to hear a little timetable for Mr. DeBose. How long you think it's gonna take y'all to craft this, so we can?
We'll have an ordinance out, email to everybody, hopefully Friday, no later than Monday. Is that not correct, Mr. Morgan?
So it'll be next week. Let's don't, let's don't do a date certain. Sammy and I are the sponsors of the ordinance. So you don't email it until Sammy and I just look at it first.
Well, it'll be vetted first by the committee and you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, the committee doesn't need to look at it anymore. It'd be Sammy, okay?
Sammy.
All right, because we gotta get through the process. I don't want to have another voice for it and all that kind of stuff.
Then I'll get it out as soon as we can.
As soon as you can. But we need to have it right, and then give these gentlemen a, a chance to read it before we show up here.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I really don't agree with that. I, I think we all should get it at the same time.
I have no.
Because it's already out of committee. It's, it's come before this county council. I mean, that's, with all due respect, I just think each council member should get it at the same time.
Well, the sponsor of the ordinance is the task force and the chairman, and that, Sammy and I have been working on that understanding. So that, that's the way we are. But.
Well, it hadn't changed what they already got.
That's right.
I mean, the attorney just said that. He's going off the bases on what you, what you have. We're gonna, we're gonna get it out to you as soon as possible.
It ain't gonna be a call meeting till I see it, okay?
Right, but I'm saying we, we'll get it out, we'll get it out as quick as we can. But it's, it's, the verbiage is gonna be used what you have, so.
Yep.
It's not gonna be anything new plugged in it.
That's correct.
All right, what else we got here? We got another item on the agenda, which is the cancellation of the April 28 meeting. Mr. Tucker, you had a recommendation.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. If I may, I'd like to make a motion that we cancel April 28, which is be our fourth Tuesday's meeting for this month. We're gonna delay anything further than that.
Who's in favor? Signify by raising your hand. And Mary, it's unanimous. We move now to council briefing, starting with Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I will not belay this any further. We've been here going on three hours and a little bit. I'm, I'm gonna say be, be patient. Thank you for your willingness to listen to us today as we reported out. Let's don't, not do good work because we have slight disagreements. Let's be gentlemen of goodwill and try to turn out as much positive and good that we can do to our small businesses here in Kershaw County. And I said this to the committee, and I said this to a few of y'all as council members. Eyes are on us. And what we do, you're gonna find others wanting to duplicate or probably do something similar. So regardless of what we decide, once we get this ordinance, you know, I'm gonna do what the majority says do. But I would like for everybody to have their turn at the mic and have their amendments heard. And then I would like for this body to take a vote, and wherever it goes up or down is to be seen. I want to thank the committee again, ladies, gentlemen, for such, such hard work and, and dedicated time, and stay safe. God bless you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Uh, Mr. Bozart?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Carpenter, could you tell us, we spent a million dollars. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, uh, can you tell us, we spent a million dollars to upgrade the 100 acres over there that we took an option on. Is engineering work and everything done?
Yes, sir.
Have we had any inquiries on that land?
Uh, we're currently working a prospect, yes, sir.
We have?
We are working a prospect currently, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Conell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. Wanted first to say thank you to Mayor Emmons, um, Ms. Keiner, thank you, Amy, and, uh, Congressman, or, uh, councilman, maybe that's a little prediction there, Mr. Snodgrass and Mr. Tucker. They worked really hard and we batted around a bunch of ideas in that committee, uh, to bring you this result. I know we've got some more work to do, but very appreciative of that. And also wanted to share a bit of good news. In and near the town of Elgin, there is a business named Alexander Screw Company that recently closed, purchased a, uh, existing facility. I'm encouraging them to be a member of the chamber, Amy. Uh, so in addition to talking about Project Walnut tonight, this is a company out of Indiana that was very interested in coming here, getting the equipment that was at this location and bringing some high-end, um, fastening and machine shop skill and product to the area. Now, of course, their efforts have been delayed somewhat with, with everything that's going on with COVID-19, but, um, it's a family business and they're excited about being in Kershaw County. That's all I have to report.
Good news indeed. Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. One, I want to say thank you to the mayor and Ms. Amy as well, and to each one of the council members, uh, for participating in this. And also, Chairman, I'd like to say thank you to yourself for appointing this ad hoc committee. Now, having said that, when, Mr. Tucker, when you, when you finish with the report, I want it. Unless there's a vote on here that says I can't get it, I want it. Do we understand that? So if anybody here tries to deny me to get a copy of that report that comes out of the committee, I want it. All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Snodgrass?
Uh, members of council, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to just say, one, it was an honor to serve on the, uh, on the committee. Uh, we worked, uh, worked very hard through, uh, in-person and some Zoom, uh, meetings, got to see the, uh, the backyard of, of Ben's backyard and his office and, and some houses of other people, uh, that we got in the Zoom meeting. That's like the, that's a new thing we're in now. You, we know what everyone's house looks like because we've all been doing these at-home meetings and, uh, but it was an honor to serve. Uh, I want to say kudos to our county staff through all of this, um, every time, and I know this is, this seems so, um, no, what, this is a big deal, but every time I go and take my trash to the airport recycle center, I continue to be amazed at the, it reminds me of the county staff that is working so hard and so diligently through all of this. And, uh, and again, I know I'm using trash as an example, but I mean, I mean, that's something that we, it's a service that continues to go, one. And if, for, for me, when I see that, it just represents, it represents EMS, it represents, uh, other departments that are just doing things behind the scenes that we have no idea that's happening, but they're, they're on the clock. So I want to say thank you to that. I want to say thank you to, uh, to Lauren for spearheading that Casey Strong video. Uh, if you guys haven't seen that, I'm, eh, then you're living under a rock. Um, that's a phenomenal video. Uh, it makes you want to go and storm something and take something over. I don't know what I'm going to take over, uh, but we're going to take something over. We're going to take over coronavirus, we're going to take over. So, so kudos to you and to Nathan for, for doing that. And just overall, our communication from the county has been, uh, it's just been exceptional. The videos that you, that you put out every day is keeping you updated on what's going on with, uh, the courthouse and the different departments. So I just want to say thank you to that. And also to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, they've done a phenomenal job of keeping our business community up to date on resources, uh, that are pertinent to them through this, through this, through this time. And again, just, just very proud of, of our county staff. And I'll end with this, I'm encouraging everyone, particularly churches, but if you have a marquee sign, uh, I'm encouraging everyone to add, add the phrase, "We are Casey Strong", or just the phrase "Casey Strong" to your marquee sign. Uh, we put it, we put it on our church's sign. I've texted a few pastors over the past week and said, hey, I need you guys to add this or need you, like, guys or ladies to, to add this to your sign. And so just if you're listening to this and you have some sort of marquee sign as part of your business or church, I think it'd be so cool that when you ride through this county from Highway 1 in Elgin to Highway 1 in Bethune and everything in between, every time you see a changeable copy sign, you see Casey Strong or "We are Casey Strong". So I just want to encourage everyone to do that. And that concludes my report.
All right, very good. Uh, just ask you to look in your package on page, um, 79. At the 12 May meeting, we'll be voting on airport commission. There are three names in there. The most recent ad is, is Mr. Phil Pot, which gives us a, a complete royal flush and we got a filled-out committee. Uh, Mr. Carpenter?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, members of council, um, uh, Ms. Snodgrass, it's hashtag Casey Strong, okay? Remember the hashtag on that. Um, just a few things, some, some good news, as always. Uh, you know, I always like to end my comments with good news lately. So, uh, this will, I think, give everybody, um, um, some good feelings. This is from one of our local industries, just received it during the meeting. I apologize if you noticed me looking at my phone, but trying to keep up with it. And, uh, we had had two, uh, two plants that had shut down because of, of issues related, but, uh, one of them, um, Shawmuth, uh, said, uh, we were laid off for one week, the company received funds approved from the government last Friday, and because they're available, we are all back to work and working 40 hours a week. So one of our two industries is back up full, um, they received the benefit of the stimulus program. And also our, um, our good friends over at GE Appliances are donating 2,000 masks to us tomorrow that were sent from their corporate, uh, to distribute to, uh, this county. So, uh, our EMS will be over there tomorrow to pick them up and to make sure they get to those that need to get them. Uh, so a lot of great stories going on and this is a strong county. That's my report.
Uh, attorney?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Come in.
Mr. Bozard, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Conell. We'll move to a vote. Mr. Gardner?
I affirm.
Very good. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Y'all be safe out there, wash your hands. We are adjourned.